Is there an implication?
Yes.
All right.
Everyone please back your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together safely and soundly tonight. Please grant the mayor and council wisdom and guidance in their decision-making and please keep us warm on what will be a very cold night. In your name we pray.
Madam Clark, you call the roll please.
Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District 1, present. Councilmember Jim Meyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gabia, District 4.
Here.
And Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
All present.
Please step for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may we see it. I have no opening remarks. Do we have any agenda announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one opening remark.
Oh, you do. Go ahead.
Just would like to introduce Mike Hassinger, our Communications Manager.
All right. How you doing, Mike?
Hey, Mike.
Welcome to the team.
Been a busy couple of week already. I'm sure it will not let up.
Well, thank you. Welcome to Brookhaven. Any else? Anything else?
No.
Any agenda announcements? Yes.
I just want to throw out a congratulations to Daniel Hall, who just got married this weekend.
Oh, wonderful. Susan, did you say this was the one-year anniversary of our court?
Yes.
Tonight? So, our court's been over one year, so I'd like to congratulate and thank Judge Stevenson, Judge Lawrence Stevenson, Judge Jonathan Grenade, and Susan Hyde, who's the court administrator. Thank you. And who else?
Did we hear that this was Chief Yandere's one-year anniversary?
Oh, yes. Chief Yandere's one-year anniversary.
And Ron Freeman.
And Ron Freeman. So, his first year was like paper. Here's a napkin.
They deserve more than that. You're a great job.
That was a quick year.
Yes. It has been.
Hasn't it?
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Agenda announcements? Okay. Public comment? The public comment section is now open.
Aubrey Valens. Good evening. Aubrey Valens, I'll be brief. We're hearing that the council may be getting ready to revisit the hours issue, and we'd just simply ask respectfully that if you do, we get some input in that or be advised about it, because the clubs have been calling us. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We have Ronnie Mayer.
Ronnie Mayer?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We had the meetings yesterday with Brookhaven Parks. I hope next time we have the meetings, you'll have one-on-one night and one on another. I felt kind of out of place at one over at Overthought, because it was all stuff, the Blackburn Park gig. But next time, let's try to do two separate meetings, so you can have a little bit of everybody at each meeting. It sounds scary. I stayed, I almost fell asleep back there one time.
No, you didn't almost.
I did.
You did.
I did.
And you snored.
Yeah.
You snored. I had to bump Ronnie because he snored.
Yeah, wake up Ronnie. So, and I appreciate the good job of y'all doing, they're having a big meeting tonight in Shambly. And I hate to keep bringing this up, but a lot of people keep calling me, and I know it's totally against y'all's mindset, but I'd like to put this on an agenda, on the ballot, on this stuff with the pink pony. So many people keep calling me and bugging me and asking me, and the word's out that Shambly tonight is going to adopt the DeKalb County rules and leave the follies open for 100 grand. So, I'm still thinking that we're all for 200 grand. How many more good stuff we could get at Parks? 200 grand for 10 years, that's a lot of money. Parks, sidewalks, and whatever else we need. More canine dogs for the city, more police cars, more policemen. It's a lot of money, guys. I just hate leaving that much money on the table. One other thing, and I'll leave y'all alone. I've got a lot on Ashford Road, about four doors down from this house, that had all the controversy. It was all put in print, and all the city paid, was $20,000. I think we need to be truthful with the citizens of Ashford Park and Brookhaven, that it was, you know, 40,000 to one family, 20 to this, and I think the grand total was, what, 65 or 70,000? I don't think everybody really knows the grand total of what the amount was. But yesterday, I got a phone call from one of the inspectors. I've got three logs, oak logs, that I left out from when I cut down a diseased oak tree, and we were just going to use for firewood as we were building the house. And somebody had dumped a load of wood chips on my lot, and I just was going to use them, you know, as we were building the house to spread it out, and now I've got a warning, I didn't get a citation, but I got a warning, that I can't have three logs on a lot, because it's not trash, it's oak logs, and because I had got another load of wood chips, that that's not good. I just don't want City of Brookhaven to become a patent place that every neighbor gets to call everybody and then that, you know. It just, it's a little much, you know. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Anybody know anything about the logs? Any more public comment? Jim, did you call on Ronnie? Okay. No more public comment? Consent agenda?
Yes. On the consent agenda, we have five items. The approval of the March 19th city council meeting minutes, the work session for the 25th, 25th regular council meeting minutes, also the IXP Consulting Services Agreement for Transition to ChatCom Operations, and last, consideration of approval of the Critical Infrastructure Information Non-Disclosure Agreement. And you have that information in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we...
Do you have a... Do you have something, Jim?
I was going to ask you, we pulled item number four off the consent agenda, so that we, I had some questions on the agreement.
Make your motion, and we'll have discussion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions on item number four.
Okay.
Looking at the agreement that was provided in the agenda package. The, let's start with paragraph five, or section five, warranties and total liability.
Page 44.
Page 35.
33.
35 in the agenda package is section five, page 35 of the agenda package. I think it's the right one.
Section what?
Section five, warranties and total liability.
All right.
This is something I've had trouble with with contracts in the past. We're limiting the consultants' aggregate liability to Brookhaven to the total cost of their agreement, which I think is 200 and some odd thousand dollars. I just, I'm not sure for 911 services, we need to limit their liability to a number that I believe is relatively low. Also, in the same page, item number seven, there's no insurance requirements in the contract that just says is reasonably necessary. I'm wondering why we didn't attach our general conditions, our standard general conditions to this agreement that we have to others? Is there a difference in this one than the other agreements we've had?
Are those the only two you wanted?
No.
You go to the other ones and then we'll...
Okay.
If you don't mind.
The address and the contractor are still the old address.
Where's that?
Section 10. Limitations of actions. I don't know if this is standard for the industry, but we're limiting actions to minimum one year following the date of cause of action. I know there's been some issues that have been dragging on for a while with other contracts at IXP slash ChatCom, and I'm just wondering if one year...
I think on that one, the state statute of limitations on any kind of tort would apply. I don't think that you can subvert state... Is that right, Tom, in a contract? They've got a limitation of actions, sort of saying the statute of limitations on any action arising out of the agreement?
Yeah. I mean, that's just... Is that the last one?
No, the others relate to just the cost and the schedule. Those are sort of the legal terms, and the others relate to the schedule and the price.
Okay, so that's the last legal term.
This is, in reviewing this, it was reviewed as a consulting agreement, one of, not of, I guess, the long duration that was there. And I reviewed it in that context that that was the case, that there were no goods being provided, but actually what they were doing was...
Right.
Was providing the transition services in order to get to ChatCom.
And is it a year-to-year contract?
No.
It's not?
It's just a one-time contract.
Okay.
And the aspect, Jim is right about the limitation on the liability, which you see a lot of these in these consulting agreements. You particularly see them in licensing agreements. I don't get too alarmed with those. It is customary to see them in these agreements. He's right. You know, it is, it does limit, and that can be contractually done, associated with that. However, if there's gross negligence, then that would not apply relative to what you're doing. I don't know as far as the interfacing that's going on, assisting, going from the old system to the new system. It's likely that they're the ones, the best ones to do it, because they're the ones that are basically running ChatCom off some. So, I, but these points are valid. I don't disagree with what he's saying.
What about the insurance requirement?
The insurance is, is we should require certificates before they do it. We'll just get that, ask for that.
And then the last two questions I had was the schedule. There's a whole list of work that's to be completed, but no real schedule. I mean, there's an end date, but no schedule, and that sort of ties also to their scheduling, their invoice scheduling that they have on Schedule B, which is the last page. You know, they're requiring us to put up certain percentages of the purchase price on a very regular 20% basis, but there's no corresponding schedule to the completion of work that relates to those values or those dollars. And I'm just wondering, is there a schedule that says that, you know, the first 20%, $52,000 is going to be completed when X amount of work is done, or is it just a standard payment?
Yeah, is that, the scope of what the end result of their contract is, is what they have to provide, obviously. So, I guess what Jim's, I'm not trying to restate it, but if we're paying these payments over time, like after the second month, will they have X threshold reaching the setup, or we just wait till the start date and say, if it's not all done, then they violate the contract? I mean, I don't know if it's necessary to have threshold dates or not, but that's a negotiating point, but I guess you could look at it like, well, on September 1st, we shall have full, fully functioning 911 service.
I guess my question is this.
We do have a date, you know, that they are to provide service, you know, earlier than August 30th, August 1, no earlier than August 1, and no later than September 30.
I guess my question is this. Our payment of their fee is put on a very specific 20% a year, 20% a month for the next five months, but there's no corresponding schedule that says they will deliver 20% of the work for that corresponding payment of fees on a regular basis?
What's the penalty if by September 30th, they don't have the work done or have us up and running? That'd just be a...
Well, I mean, it would, there are no liquidated damages. If, as a result of the city being damaged by virtue of a clean lake, then the total damages would be capped at 200,000 dollars.
Whatever you pay.
What I suggest is this, is that we ask them for a timeline, showing when the services are going to be performed. I'm sure they have that. And we have that discussion as to the fact that you're not going to pay them an installment if you're not doing it.
Well, I think the, Marie, is the installment something you negotiated, right?
Well, the installment was really to help us.
Right.
So that we wouldn't have to upfront.
So, they usually don't have an installment.
Usually, no.
They just broke up the payments for us.
Correct.
Otherwise, we'd be paying 275.
Correct.
Right. This payment plan is something...
This is for our convenience. So, do I understand, according to this contract, it says the cut-over date is August or September of this year, so doesn't that mean that all this work is done by then? Has to be. Okay, so that's...
And then if it's not, then...
And then we're paying for the service.
Right. And there's usually not a Schedule B in their contracts.
Correct.
I see where you're coming from, Jim, but I think this was something that we added to give us flexibility in payment, rather than them giving us a payment schedule and then asking for thresholds. It's a different animal, because this is something we renegotiated for our convenience, for our benefit.
Okay. And we're comfortable that this is a competitive price for the work provided?
I am. That's a great...
Well, they're the sole source. I mean, they are the consulting firm, and they are also the provider of the service.
So, their fee is the...
They asked us for a different amount.
I mean, our service charge, you saw that last meeting, has been reduced from $1,025,000 to $875,000 a year.
Right. So, that's what we would be paying.
It was, excuse me, $1,075,000 to 875, and then the next year, it went to $1,025,000.
So, what was the recommendation on how to handle the insurance issue, Tom?
We'll ask for a certificate of insurance before we pay it.
And that's for what amount?
It'll be, we'll review it first, but it should be no less than $1 million. That's what we carry.
I have another question.
Yeah. On that topic, though, the insurance is in this contract, saying consultants required to maintain...
It works in this conversation.
Yeah. It's in the contract already, consultants required to maintain at its own expense this insurance. We're just talking about it's not defined or limits? I mean, I think that that's...
It's defined as reasonably necessary.
We have, you know, to Jim's, Jim's point is that on consulting arrangements that are continuing and on the term, we do use the statement of conditions, the general conditions that we do apply to that. I chose not to do so in this instance, because it was a short-term contract, and it was, you know, clear it had to be ready by the time the ChatCom was going to, you know, get done. So, but part about the insurance and requiring the certificate, making sure they carried workers' comp and all those other things.
Yes.
All right. Any more questions?
Last one.
Yeah.
Marie, worst, I have the highest expectation from ChatCom, and I think they're going to be great, but we are looking at what-if scenarios, and there is a $200,000, if for some reason they don't meet the obligation, then their exposure is $200,000. What is the game plan if that scenario plays out?
We would continue to be served by DeKalb County.
Even though we've given them notice?
Correct.
So, for us to be able to...
I think we're going to probably know in the next couple of months if we're not going to be hitting the target, and we would notify the county that, you know, we wish to be served by them. We haven't approved on our side an IGA for 911 services. The county never approved that nor signed it, so we were already operating without a contract with them, on a hope and a prayer.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion of status, any of us saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries? No, he said aye. Didn't you, Jim?
Yes. Aye. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any announcements?
Yeah. Saturday, April 19th, we're having to clean up the Peachtree Creek, and it's going to be a, it's going to be one heck of a good time. We expect about, probably anywhere from 50 to 75 people to show up. It'll be Boy Scouts, it'll be high school people, high school kids, it'll be members from Rivers Alive.
What time?
It starts, we'll be assembling between 7:30 and 9:00. Cleanup actually starts at 9:00 and goes until noon.
And where?
It's going to be right on Corporate Boulevard, right at Peachtree Creek. We'll have...
Right here? Behind Zuffy, Fuzzy's?
Yeah, right behind...
Assemble in the microtub?
Well, it's going to, actually, we're going to be using the Salvation Army parking lot, just on the other side of the street here.
Okay.
We're going to, DeKalb County's going to be assisting us a great deal. We're going to be announcing our ambassador for the, we're going to be announcing the creation of the Keep Brookhaven Beautiful Foundation, and our ambassador will be announcing our efforts towards significant improvements in recycling throughout Brookhaven, our pilot program, which is about to begin with the DeKalb County sanitation.
Actually, I got my trash cans today.
Yeah, good.
They're home and ready.
Pretty, and we have the Brookhaven logo on them.
Beautiful.
You have a Brookhaven logo on them?
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful.
I didn't notice that.
Trash cans?
Thanks to Marie.
I didn't notice that they had a Brookhaven logo.
Oh, yeah. Actually, Brad's got a picture of it. I have it on my phone. I'll show it to you later. And then also, the, this is being put on by the North Fork Connectors Group, which is a 501(c)(3), and they are going to be crucial for us as we proceed with the development of a linear park along Peachtree Creek. And that'll be a major part of the announcement, is the effort to pursue that course. It's going to be a fun day. We plan to do a press release, a press conference.
E-blast?
Press conference at 9 o'clock, and we're looking for a lot of joint participation from DeKalb County and from other associations, so it'll be a fun time. Come on down, and let's make a good go of it.
We're going to do an e-blast, maybe Thursday? About that?
Yeah, Dana and Mike, I think, are pretty much on top of this.
All right. I'd like to, for some of those surrounding businesses to get noticed about...
We're offering.
No, I mean, what's the call wash?
Aubrey was very generous and offered land over there for the dumping of the dumpster, and we may take advantage of it.
Oh. Also, on the e-blast, they've asked for people to register on the northforkconnectors.org so that they can have a head count, so...
Well, there's also a liability issue. We don't want anybody, I think, under the age of, I think it's 12, you know, be down in that creek, because it can get dangerous with the steepness of the banks, and especially if they're going to be in the water, you know.
Yeah. So, I think the sooner the e-blast goes out, the better.
Don't bring your kids to Brookhaven.
Yeah, well, if the kids come, the kids can go and help do recycling. That's the whole point. It'll be up in the, probably up in the parking lot of the Salvation Army. They have allowed us to use that parking lot that day. They're going to keep the gates open. A lot of collaboration going on here with a lot of different organizations and a lot of different people. And it's the first of many to come. There probably will be at least, I'm estimating, at least another four to six this year, and we got great help from DeKalb County on this. You're going to see it when you come. They are bending over backwards with supplies and help. The fire chief, our chief, with police assistance. It's going to be, it's going to be a good time. It's supposed to be really nice weather. Y'all come down now. You hear?
All right. Any more announcements?
The rescheduled Brookhaven Police Golf Tournament is coming up on the 20...
Monday.
This coming, yeah, this coming Monday. Is that the 21st? Yeah. So, for those who are not playing, I think they do have an ability to go in for just the aperitif golf.
Yeah, what we did is, we extended the sign-up, and if somebody wants to come and join in the festivities, which are between 4 and 6, it's a $50, minimum $50 contribution. You're welcome to join and pay tribute to the police scholarship fund and show your respect for the police here at Brookhaven.
How do you, what, where do you go?
The event is at the Capitol.
I mean, what's the register?
No, they'll take your money at the desk when you come. I'll send you the form on that.
Okay.
All right. Any other announcements?
Yes, I have one. Next Tuesday at our next council meeting, on the agenda will be a public hearing where we will kick off officially in accordance with the Department of Community Affairs Rules and Regulations under the Georgia Planning Act, the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay.
And so, this is just a formality to go through what exactly we're going to be doing through the process of developing the Comprehensive Plan.
All right.
So, we will have Jacobs here to make that presentation.
Any more announcements? All right. Reports and presentations.
Okay. Just a quick update on our zoning map audit. We've been able to, as of today, we've secured another 77 files from the county. So, those missing and lost files are being found slowly, but we are incorporating them. So, progress is being made and moving right along.
Anything interesting being found in the files? Any old letters or any historical?
Nothing that we can report at this time.
No Baron DeKalb letter?
When do you...
It's the founder of DeKalb County, or the store named after Baron DeKalb.
Come on, Bear, give me a letter.
Later this summer, and looking at a public hearing, well, looking at a public hearing to readopt the zoning map with all the corrections sometime in August.
Do you know how many files are still missing? Do you have any idea?
We don't know. We don't know.
The gap is 20 years.
Well, that's good news.
Okay. Next.
Update of the purchase of the parks. I'm going to yield to the city attorney. I think we do have a date now. There was a date late last week.
There was a date of 30 days from March, end of March, so it'd be, the date's April 27th. We are corresponding with the county. They said the county prepared the deeds. We have given them the legal description. All of the environmental audits have been completed. There are no findings, except for some drums at Linwood Park, which need to be carried off. We had no issue of any pushback from the county with respect to Brookhaven Park, but anticipate that there may be some with that. And so, we're, the clock is ticking for them to deliver it. We have prepared the closing statements, and at the end of the 30 days, if we hear nothing, we will tender for money and ask for the deeds.
Keep our fingers crossed.
That will or will not include Brookhaven? You said that.
It will include. Well, what I'm saying, if we tender, we will tender for Brookhaven also.
Brookhaven, in its, both parts of Brookhaven.
In its entirety.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay, so what's the date? The 24th?
27.
27.
27. Does that have to be approved by the board commissioners?
Yes.
Before it's...
It is, and I have not, it does, and I have not looked at their agenda to see where it is, but they do approve it.
It is. They're on that Thursday meeting? Is it when they're, it's on the agenda for that?
It should be. We hope it will be.
Okay.
Actually, they meet the same day, as we do. We do. It should be next to...
They meet the 22nd.
It should be next to.
Right. Right, but I don't know if there's a committee of the whole this Thursday, which would be on that agenda.
Alright. Can we engage our commissioners to, we'll call, can you make a phone call?
Yes, I can.
Don't need me to make one, I'll make one too.
I have been communicating with the county manager.
Because there's something going on right now, I found out today, that the Blackburn Tennis Center has some kind of bad leak, and they're calling us to come do something about it, but we can't mess with their facilities apparently.
You've accepted the parks for the operations of-
I know, but this is a, you'd have to jackhammer and stuff, apparently. You, yeah, it's in the basement of the Blackburn, yeah. So it's a, not a maintenance issue, so they're shut down.
These sold warranty as is?
Well, at a hundred dollars an acre.
You get what you get.
You know, caddy out him, Tor.
Okay, um-
Number three.
Update on-
Update on City Hall, of course, we're in the building, and last weekend, we, many departments moved to the second floor, and on April the twenty-fourth, the rest of us will move upstairs to the third floor, so we will have full occupancy of the building less the council chambers. We expect the council chambers to be delivered to us as early as May the second, but as late as probably the fifth or the sixth, that following week, but in enough time for us to hold our first city council meeting on May the thirteenth. And our work session will be there too. They're making great progress.
New paint smell, new paint smell.
Alright, um-
Next. Paving, don't get, check it out, it's on, new business.
Oh, I'm sorry, everybody, everybody. Okay, number one on new business?
Okay, this is a resolution, twenty-fourteen dash zero four dash zero one, it's consideration of approval of a resolution in recognition of Georgia Cities Week.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution ID number one-two-nine-four, consideration of approval of resolution in recognition of Georgia Cities Week.
Is there a second?
Second, and do you need the resolution number though?
She read it.
I did it.
Alright, um, any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolutions, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright.
Next item on the agenda, resolution twenty-fourteen dash zero four dash zero two, consideration of approval of resolution establishing an enhanced nine-one-one charge on wireless communications, wireline communications based over Internet Protocol connections, and prepaid wireless services within the city of Brookhaven.
So this is what, part of our process to get the fees that are already being paid to go over us, okay? Is there-
This is not a new-
No, it's not new.
It's the existing.
Right, we gotta get our citizens to start saying-
Watch your bills, to be sure it's being-
Sent to Brookhaven.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty-fourteen dash zero four dash zero two, consideration of approval of resolution establishing an enhanced nine-one-one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting?
I'm sorry. Couple questions, actually, first, whereas, it says we were created by the two thousand thirteen Georgia General Assembly, I think that needs to be twelve?
Twelve.
The original that we have printed has twenty-twelve on it, that was a draft that was sent in. The one that we have-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Printed, the signature has twenty-twelve, that was sent in earlier as a draft.
Okay. There are also, one of the whereases, we talked about having a public hearing, public, received no less than ten days' public notice, is that a requirement, or is that something we need to do? I don't remember a public hearing. I'm looking at page fifty-six of the packet, it's the second or third or fourth pages of whereases, actually, it's the last page of whereas, midway up. Where are you, the page?
Public hearing was held on this day after the public-
Received notice in ten days' public notice.
Where is it?
It's, it's in the, the last page of the whereas.
On page fifty-six.
Page fifty-six of the package, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're on-
Midway down.
The fourth whereas.
On the, on the chatcom thing?
No, this is on the, the nine-one-one.
The C.
Yeah, the-
Well, didn't we discuss this in the hearing?
We did.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the discussion.
This came in after, and this should have been on a previous council day, but IXP said that later.
So what does that mean?
Well, we've, we've heard, we've had a public hearing, I mean, it's not an official public hearing, it is a hearing held in the public council meeting-
Right.
That we heard what the provisions of the service would be, the costs would be, we discussed that.
I guess, and my question is probably for the city attorney, is this a public hearing for the adoption of chatcom, or is it for the adoption of the fees that are associated with the nine-one-one, the charges that we're requiring for landline and mobile service?
It's for the, for the charge.
For the charge?
For the charge.
Okay. Have we satisfied that requirement, I guess, my next question?
Well, my opinion, no, as far as the public hearing requirements, no.
And is that a problem?
Well, then I'd have to, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to defer to look at the issue, but, so-
Can we have a public hearing on it right now?
No, you admit it, no.
Can we do a friendly amendment on this?
Well, that's-
Post that it could be-
Can we defer it?
No, it, it really doesn't matter, and again, this, this was absent during the full review and process that we went through on reviewing the contract, the agreement, what that included, and many meetings, and following that, chatcom contacted me and said that they needed this resolution, so I put it on the agenda. So it's really an after-the-fact matter, but if you wanna go through the formality of a public hearing-
Well, I don't know if this is, is this a state requirement, or is it charter, or I mean, the ten days, it didn't drop in, I'm just curious where it came from.
I disagree with you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Yes.
I've done, I did that many times in law school, as I'm sure you did too, Mayor, but the, it's in this resolution that was provided, so let me review whether or not state law requires it in the requirement, or if you wish to go ahead and notice a public meeting today, we can run the notice in the paper and be heard.
Well, I mean, in my mind, just to argue for economy's sake, when we announced the public hearing, we had a couple on consideration of adopting a nine-one-one. Adopting nine-one-one means you adopt the charge, because that's, it goes there-
The charge, the charge was discussed.
I know, but I'm saying, it's part of the-
Did we hold, did we hold a public hearing?
Yeah, we did, absolutely, and that was discussed, that was part of, adopting the nine-one-one means you, it's like you're saying, you're adopting a police department, well, you adopt their salaries and everything too, but you don't have to do a public hearing to say what their salaries are gonna be, or, you know, we're just having a public hearing to say their, how you finance a police department.
Let me review that, Mr. Mayor, if we could defer it till the next week.
Can we adopt it, and then if we have to do it again, we'll adopt it again?
Well, let's, let's just defer it, okay, that'd be my recommendation.
And I withdraw my motion.
Alright, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we-
It wouldn't vote it on, right? Okay, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer item number two on new business, resolution twenty-fourteen dash zero four dash zero two, to the, gonna be the April twenty-second council meeting?
Well, we're gonna check if that's not ten days, I mean, if this is a state requirement, then we'll probably hold it till May-
But just do it for the twenty-second, and if it is a state requirement, we'll defer it again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you say either or, and then that way, I won't have to ask you on the twenty-second to ask for the thirteen?
Go ahead.
I'll do an either-or.
Thank you.
I mean, either, either April twenty-second, or what's the next date?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Y'all in favor, I'm sorry, discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, number three, paving list?
Number three, is the consideration of approval of the paving list, and Mr. Meehan is here to review that, so that, this is a list that you will be reviewing which has priority.
And this was provided in the packet?
Okay, yeah, the final paving list was provided in your agenda packets, and based
on, and this was compiled based on the input from all the council members, and we just asked for the approval so we can get going with the bid.
Do you guys have questions?
Yeah.
I had requested on Caldwell that it be limited to the stretch from Redding to Trentwood, which was, the PCI was thirty, was the high thirties, and then once you go past Trentwood the city limits, it jumps to sixty-six, sixty-eight.
The only reason I left that in, 'cause it's an only four-hundred feet, and I didn't wanna leave just a four-hundred foot-
Well, I guess my-
-hanging out there, but we can look at that, we can-
My intent was, I'm sorry, my intent was swapping Ashford for, for that stretch of Caldwell.
Well, Ashford is in there too, I think, we can look at, do both, I would rather leave it in there to where we can, if the, but, if the final prices and bids allow, that we could add that in, so we're not leaving a four-hundred-foot stretch of road out there.
I mean, there's a logical breakpoint, 'cause that's where it narrows from four lanes to back to two lanes, but, okay, and then your, your pricing, do you think you're, you're high-low, or?
Um, we try to be conservative in this initial estimate, and, I mean, you know, we, we're not really gonna know until, I mean, there's so many variables in paving prices with oil prices and workload and everything else, so it's gonna take the bids coming in, but we try to be conservative in doing these, in these estimates here for at least budgeting, if anything, we wanna be able to add more roads in with the budget than to have to not do things on this list.
And when will you bid this work?
Like we said, in the work session, we, we will have the RFP out by no later than April thirtieth, anticipating, I believe it's a twenty-one-day RFP, so we'll have, by the end of May, have an award of a contract, and the work will begin in early June and extend throughout the summer into the, probably into the early fall, depending on how we can schedule, get everything scheduled.
But you're pretty optimistic that we'll get all this paving done?
Oh, we will, we will get it all done, that'll be a provision of the RFP and the contract that we will get it done this year, within this, before the fall.
And the, on the Ashford Dunwoody section, we're gonna coordinate the restriping program there with the repaving?
Um, yes.
And remind me, what, what is the total mileage, miles of roads?
Total, including the, including the five that we're doing this year too, the total mileage here is just under six miles, it's like five-point-nine-seven miles.
That's a good number.
Was there a total? Yeah, was the total?
Total is a hundred and seventeen miles in the city.
No, I mean, what's the total paving from two thousand thirteen to-
The five, that's the five-point-nine-seven, I thought they were asking.
Two years, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing I had a question about on this was the patching estimate, thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
There are some, how much does it cost to patch?
It depends on the-
Ten yard by five-yard section.
It depends on the road, and it-
Roughly.
Roughly, I'd have to get my calculator out to do it, I would say probably, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, we, asphalt is usually about, about eighty dollars a ton, ten by five, and it's, a hundred and ten dollars per square yard per inch is, I know, the weight, so, ten by ten's about a hundred, which is about ten square yards, which six inches-
How much could you patch with thirty-five thousand dollars, roughly?
Thirty-
How many feet of a street, most size?
What would you remember?
For a hundred and ten pounds per square yard per inch?
Square yards per inch.
Square yards per inch, so a ten by ten would be about nine, a little over nine square yards, which would be, at six inches depth, is about, it's six-sixty times nine.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Is that fifty?
Five hundred or fifty-five hundred?
Six-sixty, five-nine is fifty-nine hundred.
Fifty-nine hundred divided by two thousand, so it's about two tons, two, two and a half, three tons, so let's say it's about three hundred dollars for a ten by ten, based on the bid, roughly, so, I mean, then by that, ten by ten, and the patches we would do, we wouldn't do, you know, you're, we're not necessarily doing the whole street, we're doing here and there, so-
But there are some stretches that, you know-
Right.
Ten, fifteen yards.
Right, and that's what we would do under this with the bidded price, because they're, they're bigger patches than what we can normally do as part of a maintenance. We can do about, up to about a five-by-five, six-by-six patch with our normal maintenance crews, when we get above that, you know, we have to really do that as capital patching, which is what we have this set up for.
So this patching is different than our pothole budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we also will be doing, I mean, for potholes, you know, anything under about a ten, less than ten, ten by ten is probably the max we would do with our maintenance crews if we needed to, but normally, we were trying to keep those down to about a five-by-five, six-by-six, and then potholes smaller with ma, with our normal maintenance budget, those will be continued to be done.
I guess we could do a mid-year budget adjustment on the patching if we're finding that-
Right.
'Cause I'd really like to get aggressive on it.
I know.
There's some roads that are obviously we couldn't get to this year that are bad shape, you know, so-
Right.
I'd like to get some aggressive patching.
And that's why I put the thirty-five thousand in here, so we could do some aggressive large-area patching with the, include that into the bid, the RFP, and then compile a list, we didn't have an actual list to put on here, but have a list compiled to come out of that thirty-five thousand dollar allotment.
And so when you put this up for a bid, you talked before about having more than one contractor, so will you divide this up between multiple contractors?
If the bids come in appropriately low enough, yes, we can, we have that option, I mean, we don't wanna necessarily say we're gonna do two contractors and then have one come in real low and one come in real high, but we, 'cause we wanna-
Doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen, but, but we wanna, we have the, we will set the RFP up to where we can, we can award to multiple contractors and split this list up.
I just don't want you coming back in June saying, been delayed because a contractor has to go-
No, we will, that's a provision we, we didn't have in the previous contract that we will have in this contract.
And the thought is, they're gonna go from street to street to street, once they get, once we give them the notice to proceed, they're gonna roll through?
Roll through, the, the one thing we do have to consider, and we talked about this like on Dresden Drive with the adjacent apartment construction, we won't be able to pave Dresden until they finish their curb and sidewalk work, so that, we'll have to coordinate with any ongoing projects on these roads, or with Johnson, Ashford Dunwoody, we need to coordinate that with the Ashford Dunwoody-Johnson Ferry repaving, restriping project, so there'll be some, some of these we'll have to coordinate with ongoing projects out there, but yeah, the, basically, once we get them started, at least with the majority of this list, we'll be able to just go and go, go straight through from road to road to road.
Alright, last question on, Rebecca had already asked it, but I'd like to know some kind of specifics as to coordinating the restriping with the paving on Ashford Dunwoody, how do we, how is that set up, I mean, what's the process there that we're engaged in making sure that happens?
It's just working with, coordinating with PTOP and PCID on that contract with the, we are, we are constantly, I'm working with them constantly on this, they're not at that point yet, they don't have, we're probably further ahead with this schedule than they are with their schedule on the, on that restriping project, but whatever we do, even if we do ours in advance, we would coordinate what we do to match up with what they're going, what they're gonna be doing on that project.
Can we get what their schedule is?
Um, they haven't set their schedule yet, so, we will, before we start paving Ashford Dunwoody Road.
Do we have a price and a schedule for relocating the utilities that need to be moved from?
Not yet, we're still working with them on that, so-
And would you expect that?
Um, I'm waiting, I haven't heard back from Atlanta Gaslight yet on that, so we're, we're coordinating that, some of it is getting, it's, it's working with the designer that PCID has hired with what needs to be done, and then getting, coordinating that with the utility companies, and they're, they haven't gotten enough of the detailed information yet to get that information back from AGL, so-
Can we get an update on that next week, on that whole process, 'cause I wanna make sure that Ashford Dunwoody doesn't get held up because we're waiting on somebody else's?
No, we won't.
Yeah, dates and time, yeah.
Okay, and I would, I'll see if they have it.
Depending on them, but I'd like a meeting, have you to have a meeting with them or something.
Well, we meet with them monthly, I'm meeting with PCID monthly on the PTOP Committee, which involves this project, they just approved their budget last month and gave the designer notice to proceed, so they're not at that point of having a construction schedule, but what we do, we don't necessarily have to wait for the restriping project to do the paving on Ashford Dunwoody, we just have to make sure that the striping we put back down on Ashford Dunwoody is compatible with what they're going to be doing, from a design standpoint.
We will have to move the utilities in order to pave.
No, not our stretch of Ashford Dunwoody, we won't have to move the utilities to pave our stretch of Ashford Dunwoody. The section that's on this list, we won't have to, we stop short of the intersection.
So South Johnson Ferry Road?
That's, South Johnson Ferry Road is actually the north intersection, it's at the Valero, we stop at the Valero. We don't- We don't go into the middle of the intersection with this paving.
We're not going to repave under where we're taking out the medians?
That's going to be done under the G-DOT project, under the PTOP project.
Wouldn't it be done at the same time?
It's going to be under different contracts and under different contractors, so ideally it would be good to do that, but we don't have to do that at the same time.
I just want to make sure, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of moving parts here. I want to make sure we are ahead of the game and bugging them over and over again, hey, we're getting this done, we want to make sure we don't, you know, end up stopped paving and then two weeks later we have to disrupt everything again and go pave over the place that they, just want to make sure.
We are. That is part of the coordination I talked about having to do when we do these projects.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Anything else?
I don't.
You going to make a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the paving plan as published in the agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm just excited that we're finally going to start paving roads in quantities, and these are great roads. I think we all came to a good agreement that we needed to prioritize the ones that are poor, are poorly rated roads, but also are more highly traveled roads as well. So I'm happy with this list and I think it's going to be a huge improvement.
Significant. Six miles.
The first of much to come.
Right.
I've tried to remind people that, you know, DeKalb left us with a ten-year backlog, and we do have a hundred and seventeen miles of roads to go, and I've tried to caution people that your cul-de-sac or your dead-end street or your neighborhood road might not get paved, even though it's in terrible shape and has a low rating this year, but more to come, and I'm anxious for us to continue to fill potholes and patch.
All right. I'd also like to make sure the public understands that the paving schedule we have published on the website is not set in stone, so the twenty fifteen, sixteen, I'm not sure how many years would go out. What do we go out to? Four years? All of that will be considered as we, as we move forward with next year's budget.
And I think once we complete our transportation plan, we're going to be able to set that five-year capital improvement budget based on, you know, combination of paving and also road improvements. I mean, at that point, we're going to need to look at not just resurfacing, but also realigning and other things based on the recommendations that come from the transportation plan. So this is, this is this year's budget. Next year's one would be better because we'll have that information to build on going forward. All right. All in favor of adopting the paving plan? Please signify somebody saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's adopted. All favor of resolution of bringing Richard back up here to stand by the paving plans?
Stand by the dates.
Yeah, exactly. Number four?
Yes, number four resolution, twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero three, consideration of approval of a resolution adopting the municipal court fee schedule to offset expenses and defray the cost of operation of the paving of this court and for other purposes.
The fines and fees schedule needed to be re-amended because we passed chapter sixteen last council meeting, so it changed all the code sections, so we had to amend our fines and fee schedule, plus we kind of updated some of the other sections that were referred to in the last time we adopted it, and we also added the false alarm fees to it.
All right. So did we change the fees or we just realigned the code references?
We realigned the code references and we added the false alarm fees that you adopted.
And it was also, it was also reviewed by the chief judge of our municipal court, and so, and changes were made with that review on some of them too.
All right. Any, is there a motion? I move we approve resolution thirteen dash? Two thousand fourteen. I'm not looking at the right agenda.
I'm in. I can take it.
Yeah, go ahead, Ben. Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
I move to approve resolution twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero three, consideration of approval of a resolution adopting the municipal court fee schedule.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Please signify somebody saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's passed. Other business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could just draw your attention back to our agenda for the work session. I would like to go over a few things for a point of clarification and to tell you where we are as to some of the agreements we made on what would be coming on your next agenda. First of all, our next meeting is next Tuesday, so we don't have a one-week break in between. We talked about under upcoming agenda items, the review of chapter four alcohol beverage ordinance. All right, what I'm going to be doing there is we're going to be scheduling a forum and open house or a meeting, so that's going to be looked at over the next couple of weeks so we can give the public enough notice, and that would be businesses and the residents. So that's not a problem there, but it's items number two and three, which is chapter seven and chapter sixteen. We're going to work hard to get that on the agenda, but tomorrow night, our community development department has twelve cases on CBA, so they're not going to be available to me tomorrow or most likely on Thursday, and then Hackett's and the agenda has got prepared for Friday. So what I'm asking for is instead of, we'll see what we can get together for the twenty-second, but most likely it will be May thirteenth, if you all are in agreement with that. And discussing it with our city attorney and his availability as well. I mean, we're going to see what we can do, but I want you to understand.
Can we, in the meantime, implement the policy that you suggested where we just add the statement to the?
Yeah, and I'm getting to that.
To the permit?
Absolutely. We can change that because that's an administrative matter. The only reason I wanted to include that into the ordinance, which I still want to do, is because it strengthens it.
I agree, and.
Yeah, but administratively, we can do that tonight.
Yeah, we can do that without.
Correct. And again, you know, I think what we can do is at least identify the different sections in the noise and in the building regs as to what is going to be, what's going to remain in the noise ordinance, what will be in the building, and what's going to be referred back and forth along with the land development regulations.
It'll also give you time to strengthen the severe penalties for three oak logs in the yard part of the ordinance.
Yes, well, I'm going to personally go out to that property tomorrow and wonder why he's not receiving more citations, yeah.
He's going to turn into artwork, my mom.
There you go. Well, he can get a chainsaw out and cut a bear, make a bear.
A snoring bear.
A snoring bear, Papa Bear. And then last, on the apartment interior inspections, we're going to be working on that, but remember, that is part of our zoning ordinance, and that requires going to the planning commission and requires a public hearing and fifteen-day notice for that, but we'll be discussing it. Text amendment to, excuse me, I'm on the average setbacks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, I'm ahead of myself. Sorry, that's number four. Number four, that is, that ultimately we'll have to go to the planning commission, and we do have some work to do because we need to review and survey what our surrounding jurisdictions are doing and then also GIS. So we'll begin work on that tomorrow, but we'll see what we can get and what we can share. The last item is what you're going to get, and that is, I think that's just going to be a very easy text amendment, maybe one or two lines, and we're done on that, and then of course checking with our revenue department to see where we are, if they've received at this time a hundred percent of inspections. So we'll be reporting that back to you.
So the lunch, the dinner time we had gave us the opportunity to realize we probably bit off a little more than we could chew on those, on those couple of dollars.
Well, we are.
Yeah, with the ZBAs and things.
Yeah, and we are wanting to do this as much as you all have not been.
All right. I have an issue on new business. Just like to get an update on the Google Fiber's application submission.
Okay, we are ahead of ourselves right now. We've been working with our sister cities on a number of matters, and it's now starting to break apart and it's going to specialized fields. With our city attorneys throughout the eight or the nine cities that are part of this initiative, we're coming up with a standard agreement. There's been some discussion about franchise, and Google is now working with the state to come under as a different type of utility where their concern is to have individual franchise fees assessed to them. The other update that I just received today was coming up with a standardization of the fiber huts and how they will be leased out. In Austin, where Google is now located, in the fiber huts, they do something very similar to like cell towers, that they'll do a land lease for a very specific area. They, in Austin, use the customary rental rate for industrial buildings, which was anywhere from three to five dollars a square foot. The cities, they're working together on this, and when I say together, everybody's coming up with the same form, and the discussions over these last several weeks have been, what can everybody live with in the form? So right now, all the cities are looking at a five-dollar per square foot land lease, and that would be on a per-year basis. There is some discussion on my part that in exchange for that and in addition to that, I'd like to be able to have all public facilities to be cabled so that especially in our recreation centers, you know, we can have TV monitors and we can be hooked up to the highest grade because they have three platforms of levels of their service. So that's being investigated. I talked with Ben Song today, and so he's looking into that. The, let's see, that takes care of the land lease, and, oh, the other thing, the process in which Google will come to the cities and how they will start filing to be able to get their permits, that's the last thing which is taking a little bit more time with each of the cities to have the identical forms. And there's been a little bit of discussion back and forth with Atlanta. I think that that's going to be easily resolved, and I think we will have a form that may not be identical to every city, but will be very close, that it'll be hard to tell the difference. We have a May first deadline to get all of this material to them. We're confident we're going to make it. In fact, we believe we'll be early on that. So we're making a lot of progress on that, but we're going to, when we get into these fiber hut agreements, that's going to have to come before you all when Google makes the determination, is this a market that they can serve? When it comes to that point, you know, what we're looking at first and what Google is wanting to do, and here are some of the caveats that go with these standardized forms. The fiber huts, and they have a design that's pretty much a block to standard, nondescript, small building. We're looking at putting those on public owned properties, and the parks are really the best venue for that.
Probably would be too in Brookhaven, right?
Correct, but we don't know. We think. We think that that's the case until they look at all of their fiber neighborhoods, because remember, those fiber huts have connections for twenty thousand customers. So they, a hut may be straddling another city, or part of Brookhaven may be served by a hut that's located in another city. Where we have them on public property, you know, it's going to be much easier to standardize those. Where they might be in other residential areas of the city and on private property where a land lease would be entered into with an individual, there could be architectural styling and design standards that are part of restrictive covenants. So it's Google's desire, of course, to stay out of those areas, but those huts are going to land where they can have the twenty thousand connections. So that's an issue that's going to have to be provided for in these, in these agreements. So that then brings up the Z-word, zoning. Is it treated as a utility? So we have to make a determination on how that's treated because does that require a SLU? Is it going to have to go through the process? And then that begs the question of how do we streamline this because that's very important to Google. So those are just some of the little issues right now that are being finalized. All cities have been right on target. Ben and Ben Song and Mike Ellison have just been doing a supreme job on staying on top of this. They have weekly conference calls, and right now it's getting down to a couple of conference calls a week, not only just to the teams, but to Google as well. So making great progress, and May one, we submit, and then Google makes a determination.
Thank you. One last thing, just my recommendation is if we can go ahead and upload whatever data we have to those Google sites so that they can, I mean, I believe they indicated that they were willing to start looking at data as soon as they got it, so if we haven't submitted data already.
Well, part of that is the team of cities, and there's been really a collaborative effort. Everybody is working, all the cities now are working on agreeing to the final form, and Google has said they want one form that's available for them for all cities so that there is no differentiation on what they're doing.
Well, that's true. I'm more just talking about the data, so where the telephone poles are and where those things, you know, so that they can start analyzing. I'd love to be in the first in the pile for their starting to review that data.
I have an issue I wanted to ask about. I've heard a number of requests from citizens, and I've even heard this from Ben Song, is that our sign ordinance does not really, is kind of lacking on banners, both the size and the timeframe that we allow banners. I know the folks over at the Green Market have made a beautiful banner that apparently doesn't fit the specifications of our sign ordinance, and I, I mean, initially I'd like to cut them some slack, but, you know, they want to follow the rules and we want them to. On the other hand, you can drive down Peachtree any street and see about five banners at Hudson Grill and places that stay there a year long, and I think the, I think what happened is that when we had a rewrite early on of our sign ordinance, the old DeKalb ordinance did have a time limitation on banners, and somehow, I'm afraid that got left out of our rewrite, but we kept the same, what is it, three by ten or something on the size of it. It's kind of an undersized compared to what most banners are. The sign ordinance in and of itself probably needs a little bit more work, especially for like real estate signs and things like that. I know some other municipalities will, you know, we want our real estate people to do well, but we don't want to look at their signs twenty-four seven, you know? But I think other municipalities have been allowing to put them out on the weekends for open houses and then pull them back up. I'd like us to clean up some of that, but immediately I was wondering if we couldn't tweak that banner provision.
She called me to it.
Right, we can look at that and looking at what the time. Well, you know, we could definitely look at that, you know, many ordinances not only provide for a time limit, but the frequency in which those banners can be installed, because what you have is many cities will allow a banner to be up for fifteen days, and it will be once a quarter, and some of the end-users get very smart and they take the last three weeks of a quarter and the first three weeks of the next quarter, and then they have it up for six weeks. So, you know, we need to take a look at that and share that with you all to see, you know, what your prerogative is as to how much time you want that banner to be up, and, you know, you get the, unfortunately, the habitual violator that has the going out of business banner that stays up all the time, and they're really never going out of business, it's just an attractor.
Or the grand reopening, the grand opening the last year.
Correct, or when the cousin becomes the manager this week, it's new, under new management, grand reopening, so.
You know, in my neighborhood, we always put up a graduation banner to commemorate the kids, and it's probably.
I never got one of those.
Permitted.
I never got one of those.
We'll look at that and put that on an agenda. We'll put that May the thirteenth, how about that?
All right. Public comment? No public comment? Mayor's comments? I don't have any executive session with any.
I have one comment. Just want to repeat that this past Thursday, as co-chair of the economic development team for Brookhaven with my fellow councilman Bates here, we sponsored the DeKalb Economic Development Authority, the brand new one. We had the inaugural meeting at Cine Bistro, and we had a lot of fun putting this off, putting this on. and we had a lot of fun putting this off, putting this on. Master Bates over here. I didn't mean that way.
You have to say councilman.
Councilman Bates did a phenomenal job on the video.
You meant master of ceremonies, didn't you? Master of ceremonies.
We had just as many laughs.
Oh, we did.
At the DeKalb County.
We're still laughing about it over here. I just want to say, every, we, we did our first video, and Marie, thank you for your input, it was extremely valuable. Mayor had a cameo appearance towards the end, and his acting was so good, we understand now he has his own, you have your own agent? I mean, you're, you're, you're going to be in demand here. We had a lot of fun, we got a lot of positive comments, and it was, it was a really positive positioning for Brookhaven and the whole DeKalb County. We had everybody from all over the county. So I just want to give kudos to all that participated, and a really shout, a big shout out to Bates for how well he did with his video in such a short period of time.
Have we put that on the city website?
I'd, I'd love it to go on the, you certainly have all licensing to do that. I'd love it.
It's on YouTube, right?
It is on YouTube.
Why don't we download the link onto the website?
It'd be great.
We could probably pull it up and watch it right now.
Yeah, you got to watch the end, it's the best part.
You know, we joke around, but at the end of the day, it is a worthwhile relationship building. DeKalb County Development Authority, we certainly hope to partner with, and, and having them partner with our own Brookhaven Development Authority, and also utilizing some of the shared resources with a larger county and a larger pool of resources that DeKalb County Development Authority has.
I just want to make one other comment. We, you know, we had great turnouts last night at the, the public hearings for the parks, a lot of great input. I would hope that we've already posted or going to post all the meetings and invite the public to them. There's a somewhat limited number of public hearings, but, you know, as we heard last night, they're going to be doing online surveys, group surveys. There's a lot of ways to have people have input, to email into the portals that exist now. I, I really hope we get out the word that we truly want to hear from our citizens, that this is their chance to both, you know, develop the vision for the comprehensive plan, to have their input on transportation, and to really tell us what they want to see in our parks, because we can, you know, this really has to, it comes from our citizens.
I suggested putting all the dates together on a, on a sheet and mailing them out. I don't know if that's possible, if all those dates have been established, but, you know.
They have, and we're going to be passing that out to you.
You know, just, just as a separate sheet, so people can hang it on their refrigerator, whatever it is they do with it, but we'd like to get all those dates for all the various steering committees, the public hearings, and everything.
Mailing it to the steering committees?
No, mailing it to the residents. I'll tell you why.
Or maybe it goes in the newsletter, that's coming out pretty soon.
Um, we probably, no, we probably would need to do that in advance of the newsletter. I mean, the newsletter's coming out, but.
Not in time.
Not in time, so, yeah, we can do that.
Well, at least let's get it posted.
Yeah, definitely.
And get some blast going on. We'll be laughing about it.